Yeah, there was moist, not too big. I didn't feel like that's cheating too much. I need you to give me that here. Well, if you would just stand behind the chair and sit down so it doesn't go. And when I when I go to stand up again, they take this side up from under your knee, so I appreciate it.
For the check. Yeah, it's a special kind of intro. Yeah, I am paying out to you. Okay, we're live on YouTube. Okay, okay, um, we'll go ahead and call. Go ahead and call the Dayton City Council regular session to order at six thirty. Uh, let's turn and say play.
Hi.
I believe it's through the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic where wishes things. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like we got everybody here, including the city council. Uh, did anybody sign up for anything usually? But ask, hey, um, we're gonna move on to consent agenda if I could get a motion.
Oh, I have one minor direction. Um, it was on page three. My comments about. It it says less when it should be fewer. Um.
Less per se.
Yeah, less re- it should be fewer. That was Mayor Wiatowski's number one pet peeve was less than fewer. So, um.
I'm not, she's not the mayor anymore, no.
I'm starting to get, yeah, le- less doesn't be, just doesn't feel right, but.
Okay, well, I mean, as long as we're gonna split hairs, so I'm on the same page. It says Mayo Frank, so.
Oh, well, it's a good thing I brought that up then. So, um, I move to approve the consent agenda as a.
Not so many more.
Well, if we're gonna go there on page four, under item Sarah Elliott instead of Sheriff Elliott.
And so we don't read his.
Or Sue can get her brief.
Sorry, here.
I know, she's like, God, they attacked me.
No, just looking at those.
You got something?
Word is not helping here.
They, oh, I think AI is concentrating off the some idiots here. They keep adding apostrophes words or.
So I have a motion down in council, Macin, and then we'll get for a second, second for counselor type, I wrote. Always in paper. All right, motion passes. Okay, first thing on the action items will be swearing in our new city councillor. Eric.
I love him.
I'm Robin Peterson.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon and the state of Oregon.
And that I will do to the best of my ability, that I will do to the best of my ability. Faithfully perform all the duties of city councillor for the city of Dayton. Faithfully perform all the duties of city councillor for the city of Dayton during my continuance and during my continuing.
So when you sit down, be very careful because the chairman has a tendency to go right up from there. Well, it does.
Wow. You and I would be sworn in again too, right?
You need to be sworn in, getting started before it was reelected.
No, you have to get sworn.
Did we ever talk? Yeah.
I got two.
Can we do it together?
No.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah.
Right, like y'all scooping.
I haven't heard that in a long time. That was the best. My son loved that. We all still love it.
Just so you know, I'm. Okay, so we're going to do a solemnly affirm.
Okay. So I.
I can imagine.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon. That I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Oregon.
And then I will do to the best of my ability.
And that I will to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform all the duties of the councillor for the city of Dayton.
Faithfully perform all the duties of city councillor for the city of Dayton.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
Alright, so I drew the draft.
I drew the draft.
You solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Hello, uh, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Oregon.
And I will to the best of my ability.
And that I will to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform all the duties of city councillor for the city of Dayton.
Faithfully perform all the duties of city councillor for the city of Dayton.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
Congratulations.
They never did that before. Thank God, we're on. Congratulations and welcome aboard. Next is voting of council president. Um, we read your information in your packets from ten. That way you have an idea of what duties are of the council president. And I'll entertain the nominations.
I will nominate, uh, Councilor. Uh, you don't have, I mean, be fully honest, I'll bring my add in if you don't want.
Well, I will deny the nomination and I will nominate the Councilor Hillary.
A motion for councillor children. Do I have any other nominations or? Seconds?
Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
And then we also, so, uh, I have nomination for Lebran and a second, uh, Councilor Mackin. On those, which, are we still gonna do in our papers?
They're from a record standpoint.
Yeah, yeah. So write down your answers, fold it and pass it down. Let's go read them off. You're a friend, yay. That's for Mackin. That's for Typro. That's for Wild Harbor. So, Phil the brand, Phil the brand. You come from where, uh, Mackin? And councillor Peterson. So. Four, five, six votes in favor of councillor. Likely have a council president. Don't have to do anything else official. Think so, because he did the motion, so. Welcome aboard. Alrighty. Now we're on to item number three in our action items, old LCC rule and recommendations, and we have our deputy, our sheriff here.
We're definitely sure, yes. Yes, thank you and good evening, everybody. Uh, so essentially, uh, I have, uh, kind of a list of all of the locations in Dayton that serve alcohol or, uh, or sell alcohol. Uh, essentially, if you go down the list, we'll start with, uh, the loan, which is the six Berry Street. We had one incident, uh, involving alcohol. Um, we had an assault suspect that went into the location in, uh, August. But they weren't drinking there, so it really doesn't have anything to do with loan. They just happened to find themselves there. The second location is the bypass bar and grill, and over the year of twenty twenty four, we had five incidents that occurred at the bypass. The first was an assault involved two intoxicated subjects, and it's not clear from the investigation if they were drinking at the bar. So it may or may not have been directly related to the bar, uh, but it just happened to occur there. Uh, second call for service we had was a DUI suspect was reported leaving the bar after being refused service. Um, and looking at, I guess the call, um, it was just broadcast and it was broadcast DUI, um, or notification or for information. So if anybody's in the area, they would respond to that, but I could guess that they're probably like anybody remotely close by her. Or they did check on it, but the person was gone, that didn't happen. Uh, the third incident was in June. Uh, and was a male subject involved in a fight on the back patio, being left prior to our arrival and apparently was drinking or was reportedly drinking in the bar. And looking at that, there was not actually, there was a case number drawn, so, no, I'm sorry, there was no case number drawn, so. I imagine the other person didn't want to proceed toward the three. Uh, the fourth call, I'm sorry, third call, was a multiple subjects fighting in the back patio. This was in July first. Uh, all the subjects were intoxicated and had been drinking in the bar. Two female female instigators in that incident, uh, they were arrested for assault.
The females were?
The two females, yeah, they were, they were apparently. Uh, and then, and when was that, October twenty seventh, uh, male subject. Assaulted another male subject at the bar, all parties had been drinking and were intoxicated. During case numbers, well, so I imagine there was an arrest or some sort of, uh, conclusion of that. That was the evening hours. Uh, and lastly, uh, there's a disturbance at the location, outside the location. Uh, the address was used for dispatch, all reference, but no alcohol was related. And I do recall this, it was two subjects having an argument, but they weren't inside the bar. They have a drink in there. So the Joel Palmer Restaurant is six hundred Berry Street, had no incidents, a lot of alarms, but no. That was, no, we have, we've had alarms there historically, which is kind of funny. There's always been alarms and so we're not hundred percent sure if it's not on it, but. There's always. Uh, and then three oh one Main Street, the blockhouse, no calls for service and four oh one Berry. Uh, apartment A, I believe that's gonna be Juanita's, and we've had no calls for service, for service there. Uh, the Center Market at nine oh one Berry Street in, when was that? November eighth, we had an off duty neighborhood police officer report that a subject in the location appeared intoxicated, was buying beer. Uh, the subject left the store and drove out of the area. The suspect was searched for but not located. That's our one incident there. Dollar General, we had no calls for service that are alcohol related there. Three oh eight Berry Street, a false for service there. And last but not least, the vintages that one of. Two six or one at one sixty and zero by South and Creed Road, uh, we've had no false for service, bitter alcohol related there. Uh, yeah, the summary of all of the areas that they, that provide alcohol.
Questions?
Uh, I do have a question. Thank you, Jeremy. With your, in your experience, it looks like the by- the bypass. Is pretty steady in having multiple incidences per year. Is this unusual in your experience for bars in this part of the county?
Uh, generally speaking, it's, yeah, it's pretty usual. There's one, I mean, there's one bar in Dade, right? And it's the bypass, so, uh, that's where a lot of people go and, and so, yeah, that's where a majority of our calls. Last year it was five calls for service that are alcohol related. Um, I don't know that's astronomically high in comparison to other, uh, cities within, uh, within the county, whether it be here in Ohio, Amity, uh, Lafayette, Lafayette, and there's, and there's many of those cities that have multiple bars.
Share.
Dayton has one, so, so I, I don't think it's, and I think if you're to go back and look at years past, I don't think the vibes that are normal to high, it could be pretty, pretty average.
Okay. Um, the one thing for the council though is, um, I don't know, it wasn't on your list, but on our list in our packet, it shows Stoller Family Estate.
Oh, yes.
Um, I don't believe that we should be approving this license. They are nowhere near the city of Dayton city limits. Um, and it should be, they're incorporated Y M L County. This should be going to the county. It should not be done here at the city of Dayton.
I have that listed as well. I didn't mention it because it's outside of.
Yeah, so, um, I would ask, I would ask that staff turn that over to the county and that we do not approve or disapprove that license. We don't have, our, our deputies aren't there. We have no eyes on that property. Our deputy does not, you know, um, go there on a regular basis. I do not think we have any business like either approving or denying that license. So I think that we should inform Stoller Family Estate that they need to go to Y M L County to get their liquor license through.
Would that?
Would that have anything to do with the hotel though?
Not yet. No, because it's listing the, the sixteen sixty one Northeast.
Yeah.
Once it's over there, that's not Stoller Family Estate, that's Twin Towers.
Right, but.
And that's gonna be under whoever the licensee is, whoever's actually running the hotel. And that's not gonna be Stoller Family Estate. It's gonna be whoever they get in there as the, who's running the, the. It'll actually, it'll actually probably be the restaurant or the cafe or the bottle shop down below. It's not gonna be the, the. But regardless, that address is not within the city limits of Dayton, and we should not be approving their liquor license or disapproving it.
And then that said, um, Cypher is not on there. Cypher, please take a room and I'm in there.
Oh, yeah.
Cypress, yeah. And, um, so that should be, you know, I guess.
I don't see there's been any kind of activity there. I can pretty much guarantee there's probably not been any.
Concerned about that, but it should be on our list.
Yeah, it should be. Yeah, so, uh, we'll need to make note of that, and if that's Cypress, it's be on that list. Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion. Yes, sir.
Is, is this, does this require a motion?
I did, so.
Uh, Madam Mayor, but may clarify.
Or they just want us to say, yea, your name.
Uh, not doing anything is the same as recommending approval.
Perfect, let's move on.
Well, I would say that we don't do anything with, with the exception that we do notify Stoller Family Estate that we are neither gonna approve nor disapprove of the license, and they need to go to Y M L County to do that, help the city, baby.
Yeah, I think Jeremy already wrote that down.
Okay, just making sure we're all okay.
We know why they're on here, you can what?
It was probably just a.
Yeah.
They're a date.
Yeah.
Who cares for how long?
If I may, the way I understand it, our job would just would be to express concerns over anything that bothered us. And we did have some concerns once a few years ago. Um, at that point, what we did was recommend that the O L C C take another look. Um, everything worked out. Basically, all we're doing is saying we don't have any objection to any of these, but there is a point. We shouldn't be making that call on this one. All we're doing really is saying no objections.
So we can move on, because we obviously have no objection.
Yep, you do anything.
Uh, and number four, uh, do we need to do anything as a council for the planning commission reappointment, or is that just a list?
Motion to reappoint.
Okay. Yeah.
Uh, I move to approve the appointment of Rob Halliburton and Dave Mackin to the Dayton Planning Commission with a four-year term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
You go ahead, okay. All right, I have a motion from Councilman McGuire and a second from Councilor Little Brand. Any more questions, discussion, comments, concerns? All those in favor?
Alright.
Alright. Finding Commissioner Reappointment then, okay. Um, approval of resolution twenty four slash twenty five dash ten. Um, this is me again, because I didn't do the right amount of people, so my bad. Um, so I had to do an amendment for the Dayton Events Committee for the voting membership. And that's what that is, so if I could get a motion.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So it says outside of city limits, is that to a, to a specific distance outside of city limits?
There's. No. We've never put a, a distance on it, but I mean, I assume it would go as far as Brand Island, because part of the reason we did that in McMinnville, uh, is because some of our business owners live outside of town and Beth, who still wants to be involved with the events, lives on Grand Island.
Absolutely, fully agree. I, I mean, just, yeah, without any limit, I mean, fifty theoretically, if somebody lives in Salem, she's a lower minors. You know, probably get no, without any kind of press show set around it, you know.
Why not?
Uh, I don't know the linear distance from that center town, the most specific, you know, locations are, but.
I mean, we could limit it to Y M L County, so.
Or would it just be simpler to limit it to the ninth of Oklahoma, fourth zip code?
No. Because we have a business owner that lives in McMinnville. And she wants to participate, because she has a business down here.
Yeah, no damage to their confidence, for sure.
Yeah, and I mean, it's hard enough to get people to come and participate. I'm all for if you wanna come in Y M L County and help us, we, so, alright, um, any other questions?
The council liaison, have you?
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, and part of the reason it's already been established is because Chris was formerly the Chair of Congress then. And he, it's a good transition. They all know Chris, they trust Chris, blah, blah, blah.
Gotcha.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Alright, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Well, Madam Mayor.
Or reading, or whatever, what are we doing with this? Yeah, it is a motion.
What is he as amended?
Uh, yeah, as amended, uh, to include, uh, the distance of Y M L, just Y M L County.
Okay, um, I move to approve resolution twenty four twenty five dash ten. A resolution amending the Dayton Events Committee, altering the membership to nine voting members. Not to exceed four outside of city limits, and they may be within Y M L County, as a mistake. Um, only Dayton event committee.
Second.
Sure, and I have a motion from Councilor Mackin and a second from Councilor Typro. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor?
Alright.
Alrighty. Motion passes. Um, we are on to number six of our action item, checks, filings, authority discussion. Uh, I'm gonna let Jeremy start with that, if you don't mind, Jeremy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is on the council's agenda at a city council request. I'll just give some background to our current process, process, and then I'm happy to hear any feedback or ideas that the council might have. So for background, the mayor, the council president, and a this, and an additional member of the city council, currently councillor Mackin, are check signers, as well as the city manager. That's our current process. I don't have any recommendations at this time on any changes that are necessary, but again, I'll turn it over to the council. I'm happy to hear any feedback or ideas that you might have.
Anybody have any, yes, Councilor Mackin.
Um, I brought this up because traditionally it's tied to council president who may not be available during the day. This is something that the city needs. They are required to get two signatures on a check. We need to be available to help them do their job as best we can. So I have not found anything in writing, tying it to council president seems to be a tradition. But I, again, not in writing. So I am suggesting that from here on out, we consider those who sign on the check, on the checking account, by who is most available to help the city out.
Uh, comments, anybody else?
So just, just for clarification, Councilor Mackin, you're saying that anybody on the city council has a check signing authority?
That's what I'm asking the council to say, yes or no. Uh, I'm recommending it, that it's not tied into the council president.
So here are my two cents.
Because I'm not council president, never have been.
Okay, but that, but we still have another position open for somebody else to be check signer that is not council president that is on council. So we're not really, not offering it to everybody. Everybody has an opportunity at some point in time. We review this every year. But my deal is oftentimes, people who want to be council president often, um, want to learn more about, not saying you don't, or whatever, I understand you would like to too. Everybody who wants to be council president often wants to, because they are looking at learning more information and maybe furthering their political career. So. I don't want to necessarily take that option away. But I also agree that there should be people available, but I think that's why we have an extra council member on there in order to.
It hasn't been discussed, we put in writing, um, suggesting we clarify it.
But if we put too much in writing, then we don't have the ability to move around should an instance come up that we need a little wiggle room. That would be the only other concern, right?
Point of clarification, we're talking about the people that went to bank.
Actually sign, yes, checks.
So adding, that's, that's another big moving target. That's a lot. If everybody is in, in there.
I don't know, like, do you want all councillors to be signers or just?
No, no, um, I want the.
I'm suggesting that we open it up to any, to whoever is most available.
So are you wanting to be off?
No, no, absolutely not. That's the first thing I've been able to actually do.
Oh, okay.
Um, it's a way of getting more people involved. As opposed to just sitting here at a meeting, if you don't get called for council president, you just kinda sit here doing nothing. This is a way of getting more people involved. This is a way of getting more people involved. If the council president is available to sign checks as the city needs it, sure. But if the council president works the same hour as a city hall and it's going to be hard to get in here. Then maybe we just don't have the council president on the signing that time, that that council president. Does that make any sense?
So for me personally, I'm not going to say the council president never gets assigned.
I'm just saying we need to leave it open to who's most available, if it's council president.
Cool.
Maybe they're not available. But maybe it's, we've done enough.
Yes, sir.
Question for staff, has there been a challenge with getting checks signed in a timely manner? I know when I was council president, I got a call like maybe twice. But I mean, is there currently now with the mayor, the council president, Council Mackin and the city manager, have we had any issues that? We haven't, that we run into a problem that a check isn't going to get signed in a timely manner?
We haven't had any issues in the last few months.
Last year, oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we've ever really had an issue or since it's like an emergency check that needs to be signed.
Can we have one conversation going, please?
But it, I mean, that's really rare. And yeah, we haven't had any issues on getting someone to sign.
I mean, my two cents was it, it sounds like we're we're searching for a solution without the problem. If if we don't have an issue. I mean, I don't have a problem leaving it with the way it is, but. At the same time, if any of the people who are on the check signing authority find themselves not being able to when called by the city. I would ask that that city councillor, you know, raise their hand and say, hey, there's somebody else more available than I am. You know, because, you know, like I'm off Tuesdays and Wednesdays, you know, it's like, you know, it's much easier for me to do it, see, you know, city business, but. Let's leave it up to the councillors that are they're getting called and not being able to do it. Then let's trust our teammates enough to say, hey, this isn't working out for me, maybe somebody else can step up to the plate.
That's kind of awareness I was looking for, thank you. Anybody else have any comments? All right, we're gonna drop that subject and move on to. City council comments and concerns, and I will start with you, Council Mackin.
Okay, um, I need to talk about wheelchair access because I had some troubles last year. Big deal was I got harassed in the park. Because um, a member, none of the bands on Friday night decided to stretch words across the sidewalk. Told me I couldn't run over them. Some changes were made on paper, but apparently there was no discussion. And, you know, I need, I need. I need for that not to happen again. Part of the problem was I tried to report it to the city. I sent two emails out and they were not responded to. Um, I've also been to city county dinners that didn't have wheelchair access or inaccessible restroom. Um, there had been two meals here, but. Joined by the city of Dayton and there was no space for the wheelchair, I had to make my own place. I need some accommodations and I am looking for. I'm gonna borrow a term from Portland's Public Transportation Honored Citizen Seating. Need to have wheelchair reserved seating. Everything that the city does. Um, breakfast with Santa, a couple of tables. That don't have chairs in front of them, so a wheelchair can pull up. If we're gonna have parties, I need some awareness of the fact that this might be a good space. But then when you start adding people, there's no longer room for the wheelchair. Um, I need to raise some awareness. Um, and that's gonna be one of my big deals this year. Um. I also need to ask about updating the bio on the webpage. I haven't done mine since like eighteen, eighteen or something like that. I know we have a new councillor. Um, facilities tour, okay, I know our our new counselors have one.
That's gonna happen this summer, we've already discussed it, Jeremy.
It's, okay, um, because I've never had one, we've talked about it, I get feeling it's a wheelchair issue. Um, I don't even. Our, our, I mean, are our facilities actually wheelchair accessible?
You can walk up to some of them, but you can't get into some of it, none of us could.
I can walk up to it.
To a lot of the wheels, absolutely, you can roll up in your chair.
Okay, that's roll up in your chair, okay.
To me, that's still walking.
Well, I'll.
I mean, it's not walking for real, but you're using your wheels for your walk, so.
Well, this is one of the things I'm encountering. Every other protected class has had a lot of discussion on words, language. It seems like we're not getting rid of the wheelchairs yet. Um, I might wind up a little bit oversensitive. Um, there was a term used. We need to find somebody willing and able. Well, when you're talking about or talking to a disabled person, oh, willing and able, not willing and disabled, though, hey. Little bits of language, we're kind of. I need some forward progress here. I've been serving Dayton for twenty-six years and yet they still don't recognize the fact that there's going to be a wheelchair present. That's getting a little old, so, um. I'm trying not to just whine, I have ideas on how to make this better for everybody, not just me. Um, and maybe we can start something, Yanville County is kind of behind on wheelchair access. So, thank you, that's it for now.
Good night. Yes, um, I, I really appreciate your. Lens that you see, that you get to see the city through. And it's really important that we all adopt that lens.
Thank you, thank you.
And and having you on this council. Jabbing us as we need to be jabbed is a gift. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
For that.
My goodness.
Because it's it's really important that our city is welcoming to everybody.
Well, we have a resolution. It was passed in April seventeen, it kind of needs to be revisited. I'm the only person left from seventeen, nobody in the city.
Um, so thank you and keep, keep bringing. Keep jabbing us.
Well, um, I have one other thing I'm doing as far as volunteer opportunities. Um, I am trying to spread the word that when you start defining volunteer jobs to do like on Friday nights. Just come up with some tasks for a wheelchair user and then let people know, hey, we need your help, we would love to have you. Um, I'm doing that with a roadie in Newburgh and they're starting to listen. So that's something else we could do, you can help with in your community and your and your role.
Well, and I was actually waiting until you were finished, but that is something that I will be bringing back to the Dayton Events Committee. I'm also gonna be liaising liaison with the uh D C B A as well. It does Friday nights, so I'll be directly involved with all of it. Um, and that will be discussed.
Okay, that gives me hope for the year, thank you. Um, I'm glad I brought that up. Do you have any other comments or concerns?
Oh, the opening of the planning commission. Tim Parsons, he was the one who was outside the city limits but within the zip code.
He doesn't want to be on there anymore.
No, but. Um, are we going to continue that tradition?
Would like to continue that just because a lot of.
And that we added on to the recruitment. Um, our recruitment advertisement, it didn't say that this is for that particular reason. Or is that something that you can just kind of go with the flow?
We'll just go with the flow because I I, if we couldn't get somebody outside of the. You know, city limits, I don't want to position this city.
No.
If somebody within city limits wants to, you have to.
Okay. So, I think. Um. That'll do it.
All right. Council Typro.
Uh, the only thing I had was I had noticed a post on the Dayton Oregon Community. Uh, page about some water issues, are you aware?
Yes.
About that. Is and smell, okay.
Yeah. Excellent, Council.
A couple of small things also from the Dayton Community Board, by the way, uh, so, uh, there was, I don't know the. The credibility of this or not, but it seems like there was some concern over, you know, prowler last night, trash cans, garbage cans, recycling cans. I'm not sure, you know, if that's something that needs to be looked into or not, um, but or if it's been reported at this point, but. Uh, it seems like there's been a little bit of commentary around it, so I just wanted to bring it to attention. Uh, and then the second was actually with regard to the Palmer Creek Trail. Uh, so that was another point of discussion. I know it's owned by the Dayton School District, um, I'm wondering if there is a. Collaboration opportunity with the Dayton School District at all on, um.
I have been trying to get a collaboration since twenty twelve. If you can make it happen, please do. We actually own part of that as the city and we gave it to them.
Yep.
And I wanted it as part of our park.
In uh, your wonderful recap, by the way, thank you for those emails, um, I noticed that you met with the superintendent, so. Wasn't sure if in any potential upcoming meeting, if that can be a point of discussion at some point. Um, you know, I, I think that there's a, it's a couple of things, I think there's, there's an opportunity for the community. There's also a security concern, so, you know, when I, when I look at um, what uh John Collins was saying with regard to the history of it with the city. You're getting that that piece of land donated, you know, for those who upkeep it, for those who keep it usable, especially during the peak season, that's, that's a wonderful resource. And if there's the ability to make a more solidified situation with that that trail long term, that would be awesome. The concern I have is with regard to the security, you know. No lighting, um, you know, thing, things like that that uh could be taken advantage of. In the wrong circumstance, uh, just because there hasn't been major problems, or maybe it hasn't historically, but this hasn't been one in a while. Doesn't mean that there won't be in the future, so prevention, it could be a great uh security opportunity. Um, but access, you know, um, and access in a way that is access for all and will be very important. Um, so, you know, I know that there's, you know, the F F A does what they can do, the volunteers do what they can do, but if it's a long-term solution in the future as a possibility, that would be. Wonderful.
I was.
Yeah, that's, that's good, that's all I got.
I was pushing that thing, you can ask John Collins for.
And I'm new and I know I don't have the historical data, and so I know that I'm probably reiterating things that are, you know, making, you know, put their heads on the on the tables, but. You know, it's just one of those things that, like, it was some of those projects that I think is interesting, and so it's just bringing the the conversation.
It just works, and the frigging heck out of me.
Yep.
And I did get on the newspaper that was mailed out, um, ten years ago about the National Park Service awarding. That, that's the whole.
Yes, I tried to get.
Awarded and then it seems like it just kind of fizzled out.
Because they did not, the people, Mitch.
That was it. That's all.
Mitch's claim was so overflowing and we did not have help to follow up with the steps.
Well, so let me. I'm gonna add probably the clearest picture around this nature trail that anybody can provide in this group.
He grew up on.
So I have physically cut brush, built bridges, walked the trail, rode bikes, broken, seen people break bones on that trail, right? I planted trees, built forests, cleaned up forests, cleaned up trash, like, anything that could be done on that trail, I've done.
Yep.
Now, I will say that there's, we don't need to have a huge amount of discussion around this because I don't think we have an area of influence to make it happen. As it sits today, it will not get upkept or turned around underneath the current leadership within the Dayton High School. Or Dayton School District Program, that's just.
Yep.
Barred.
Yep, yep, yep.
The, the individual who was responsible for it is retiring. There's so much more going on at the school that to take kids from the high school. Bigrate down all the way this way within a class period to actually get some work done and keep students focused is very low. So you have to have the honor of a student to then be focused and spend more than just a class hour. To work to make this trail worth something, right? Um, now, if there was a way for us to create. A level of something, not that we need more work to do, right, but if there's a way that we take responsibility, not we as in. Us in the room, but like the city or some part grant or something, I don't even know. That would be the avenue, but I would put that as like a low.
Which.
I'll tell you.
Do you know the Boy Scouts have done their project on that?
You were part of a solid.
I did a solid thing, I got the, I tried to get the greater uh Yanville watershed involved, I tried to get. Um. Uh, a a bazillion different little organizations and I could never get it to. And I'm still poked about it today. Because I do, I love that trail, I think it's like, like woods in the middle of the city or something, and it's like. Oh, my God, I can take this wonderful cute little, you know, nature trail. But I'm still here in town and I don't have to drive anywhere. And the kids love it, they've always loved it, my stepsons, my son, everybody has loved that. I did ivy pulling, we've done it all.
I wish I still had pit crew building third, fourth and fifth graders.
Um, they would have enjoyed that project. Oh, get. It's hard to not learning, um, it was like service learning, you know, that would have been a great project. Oh, yeah, okay, Mayor Whitoski got approval for a youth advisory committee. Maybe we could turn that into a trail management project? No. Oh, well, hey, I know, I know it was a tradition, you know, I know it was a long shot, but.
Yeah, no, we don't even own it anymore, so we don't really have that much to say over it, so. Uh, anyways, moving on.
No, I don't have any council comments nor concerns.
Okay. The bathroom near me, the little park, is that locked? All day now? Twenty-four seven?
Eleven Street or Andrew Smithburg?
Yeah. And what time do the lights turn on? Or do they go on?
Believe they're on a photo sensor.
The inside lighting?
Oh, the inside lighting comes on when the doors are open. So somebody's property doors open.
I think so, um. Anyways, we might wanna have somebody go by there and check it every last while. So, I mean, I live there too, but you don't want me and my husband with us, so. Anyways, um, so I was a little concerned about that, uh, and then it was touched upon and Jeremy's gonna talk about it a little bit more, but there's gonna be some discussion about goal setting. Um, and. Oh, again, budget committee needs to be filled. Get people out, coming through the applications out. We're gonna be jumping into that, so. That's all I got. And our newest.
Oh, actually, I take that back.
Take it back.
I just wanted to formally welcome our new city manager to his first city council meeting, so. And uh, I appreciate the reports you've been sending out and the updates and just kind of letting you us know. How you're doing and um, you know, your first impressions and stuff, I just wanted to say welcome to work.
Thank you very much.
Would you have any comments or concerns? All right, excellent, well, we'll move on then. Information reports and I guess we're gonna start with Dave.
Yeah, can you guys hear me? Oh, good, okay, well, first off, Happy New Year to all of you, I mean, twenty twenty-five. I think is gonna be um, in one of the more exciting years for Dayton, um, in particular because. Commerce is gonna return to our downtown. Um, I've been updated on the schedule from Twin Towers as far as the merchant block goes. Uh, February construction should be completed. And they hope to have tenants in place in the hotel in operation by Memorial Day this year. So that's exciting news, especially because um, a city manager um, and I. And I went around and talked to several businesses and, you know, they do struggle down there and, and, and a part of that is related to, um, traffic flow. So I think this is something that's gonna be exciting because it's gonna bring traffic flow to, uh, to our downtown and. And, and support the businesses that have stuck it out through these last few years. Um, uh, starting tomorrow, our, our Christmas decor is gonna come down. So the park will hopefully be, um, de-Christmas in the next day or two. Um, we'll put things away, um. We've started construction upstairs on the replacement of the hardwood flooring. Actually, it's softwood flooring up there right now. But now we're gonna have hardwood flooring, so, um, that project has begun and hopefully it will be completed before the end of the month. Um, the bridge update, as far as replacing or updating those railings, they come from either side as well as the flooring and so forth. That started today as well. They expected it to take about one week. So at our next council meeting, hopefully we can sit down and talk a little bit about. A ribbon cutting ceremony and when that should be planned so that we could get out in front of everybody. And invite the right people that we want there to, uh, participate. The last thing was kind of something I just thought about in reference to something, uh, Counselor Mackin said, um. In November, we had the opportunity to apply for a competitive grant from Travel Oregon and. And, and it was a large emphasis on DIA. And so we decided to put in a grant application for a, um. An ADA access ramp to our bandstand and we were notified, actually on Friday, I wasn't in town, but we were notified on Friday. That, um, indeed, we're moving on to the next stage, which is the stage that hopefully will. Will bring us something about that we could do something with it. So that's kind of exciting news and addresses her concerns and, uh. And that's about all I have. I mean, we have a lot more going on behind the scenes and so forth. Um, I know that we're gonna have our, um, our, um. Parks Master Plan Group gonna be meeting with our Planning Commission in February, which you'll get updated on that. And, uh, so far, so good. We had a couple of good weeks with our new city manager, um. In fact, we were, you know, we're all adjusting to one another, but it's all really good. So. That's my report for the month of January and, uh, yeah, look forward to more exciting things ahead.
Thank you, Dave.
You bet.
I think that we got the grant. I'm not sure he actually used the words, but I'm thinking we could grant.
I'm hoping you're right. I mean, we'll see what happens. We passed the first stage, so that's the most important.
It passed on.
Okay, nothing turned down. Yeah, there we go. All right. Excellent. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Dave? Okay, we'll move on to, uh, I guess Jeremy's next.
Happy New Year, Madam Mayor and the members of City Council. I'm a little over a week shy of my first month on the job and I'm glad to be here. The team have been great. Very welcoming. And we've been busy. I'll give you a brief report of what I've been up to these past couple of weeks. So I'm meeting with our city, city engineer tomorrow and my number one priority is understanding our infrastructure needs specifically around our water. Ensuring we have a sustainable water supply, the council's goals around Fisher Farms. Uh, to, to meet that objective. And also to understand our highest priority needs so we can start being proactive in getting some funding requests out there. To our state and federal partners. I'm also meeting with the city of Lafayette this week, oh. Is it this week or days? This week. This week.
I know, I hate those meetings.
So I'm meeting with them this week. They have some topics they want to discuss, so I'll keep you updated on that. And during my conversations with the city engineer, uh, we're also gonna review the punch list for remaining items for the bridge project. We're getting very close to being able to close that project out as well as a project update on the Highway two twenty-one lift station. I have initiated discussions with US Department of Agriculture. They are the funding agency for the direct congressional award that we received for our civic center update. So I'll be meeting with them to see the steps that we need to take to access those funds. And I anticipate we'll have a conversation during the budget season. On how we're gonna pay for the design fees because the grants won't cover that as well as how we're gonna make up the shortfall, but I can at least get the conversation started. This month, I also want to start looking ahead to budget season. Budget season is gonna be here before we know it, so I'd like to better understand our financial and accounting structure. Forms that we've used in the past for budget requests. Look at what's gone well and what might need improvement and to have a rough draft of a budget calendar. We submitted an extension for our financial statement audit. Our auditing firm has merged with another firm and that transition has caused some issues on their part and they've also had some people leave the team. Which has put them behind. So we. They suggested that we request a four-month extension. We requested that. The state granted it. One thing that we should keep an eye on is. The audit completion is around the same time we're gonna get really deep into budget season. So it may be that if there are any audit adjustments, that could affect the budget process as well, so I just want y'all to be aware of that. And I'll keep you updated in case we hit any roadblocks with this. Our city recorder and library director are spearheading an update to our employee handbook. They've made a lot of progress on this. They have. Uh, had a meeting with City County Insurance Services. They have a template available to all the cities and provide some feedback. This will be a major win for us to ensure that we're in compliance with state law. And that our handbook reflects our current practices. I also reviewed correspondence that one of our franchise agreements has expired, so I will contact the franchisee to. Talk about restarting negotiations. I want to talk about some comments that came to staff's attention today regarding. Observations around fizzy water or, or fizz or bubbles in the water, and I'd like to. Explain what might be going on here. So that everybody can have a understanding and communicate to any constituents who might have questions. And, uh, don't feel free to chime in if I'm speaking. So our wells are low for this time of year. And we are. With that in mind, trying to meet our demand on our system. What happens whenever you're pulling from a well, whenever it's low, is it could cause air. To get entrained into the water. Which creates this, this, uh, this fizz in the water. Our water is safe to drink. Uh, we do daily, weekly and monthly tests. That testing is available on the Oregon Health Administration website. Uh, in the coming days, we anticipate being able to turn off the well so that the reservoirs can continue to. Fill up and when that happens, you should expect the fizzing to, to go away, but it's not gonna. It's not gonna be, it's, it's gonna be an issue that's ongoing. But just with how our wells are, are producing until we have a long-term solution to our water supply. So I just wanted you to be aware, uh, of what's causing this. The water is safe. If any members of the community have any questions, they're free to encourage contact City Hall and we'll be happy to answer any questions if they might have.
There would be something up on their website and the Facebook.
Is this the well field up at the airport or the one up on the hill? Well, both, okay.
It was just. Arrows were super low out here at the joint system. The well shut off at like. I think they shut off at eight feet. Uh, we've had it as low as ten feet in the wells. Where we can't do anything. It just shuts off. So we've had to lean heavily on the springs and that watershed up there, but it. In utilizing that to offset this being as low as it is, it has caused those wells to start getting air in them as well, so. Okay, we've had. Had well companies out to verify that everything is still functioning properly and that it's just the aquifers are low. And we're not the only ones who are seeing this problem. If you discuss it with the, the vendor that we had out. Um, they work, say, along. All Yamhill County and towards Portland Metro and they're seeing it across the board with. Wellfields having issues because of the last five years being. So, it's. As they put it, it's just something that we're gonna have to deal with.
Okay, so this doesn't have anything to do with Lafayette, because I know they went on a voluntary water restriction because they're flushing their entire system. But they, they're not pulling more water than normally. Okay, just double check. Cool.
And it might taste and smell funny, but that's the, uh, my idea is probably the minerals, because there's a lot of minerals around here in this water. And when I lived outside of town, on a well, everything turned pink, pink and pink.
It turned brown for me, but, um, but what it's worth, been there, done that, I've lived through the fizzy water, they're still here. I don't know if it did any damage. It'd be hard to tell, could you?
I know it did damage to me. It's obvious, but. Anyway.
Madam Mayor, no, no other questions on that. I have one final.
Yes, sir.
Uh, great. Uh, I don't need an answer tonight, uh, but there may be a possibility for. One or even two additional meetings for this month. I am wrapping up negotiations with the buyer for Dayton Villages. There was one final detail that needed to be worked out, so we had to extend the closing deadline for that. Depending on how those negotiations go, there may be a need for one, or possibly two city council meetings this month. The next regularly scheduled meeting is on. Uh, the same date that Martin Luther King Day falls for this year, so that would be on a Tuesday. And if a second, if a third meeting is required. Uh, I'll collaborate with Mayor on that, but if members of the council, if you want to look. At your calendars after the meeting and let me know dates, the times that don't work for you, that would be helpful. Let's not try and project. Uh, into, into the future.
Oh, specifically the month of January?
Correct.
Okay.
And then lastly, I'll. I am. Uh, planning for or would like to plan for an annual planning session in February with the council. As I understand, it's customary for the council to revise the goals in February. And I recommend a Saturday, uh, morning retreat. In my experience, that tends to. Provide some focus time for individual members. Uh, if you have any specific Saturdays in February that don't work for you, kindly send that to me. As I continue planning this and I'll keep you posted.
Does anybody have any more comments or questions or anything they want to discuss before we finish? All right. Uh, we'll do it, Jim. So, here we go. Seven thirty-three. Meeting out.
Awesome.